First, 2023. We start our meetings with a prayer reading or thought. Today that will be given by Chaplain Linda Walton and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have any volunteers for the Pledge of Allegiance today? Oh, I saw Chris Swenson in the back, so she'll do that. All right, Linda, thank you so much.
Let's pray together. Our dear Father in heaven, during this season of Thanksgiving, we have so many things to be grateful for. We have our Constitution, our Bill of Rights, our elected officials, all of the people helping the elected officials. And we just have things that very few countries on the planet have, and we are so thankful for that. Father, today we pray that your Spirit will be here with our leaders, that you will give them wisdom, that they will make the right decisions for our community, and that we may go forward as one of the best places on the planet to live. Father, we are just thankful that we don't have the things that are going on in some of the other parts of the world, but we pray for those people, Father, because they're without homes or food or things that we take for granted every single day. Thank you again, Father, for listening to us, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. As Chris makes her way up, I want to take this moment quickly to recognize all of our amazing election workers and volunteers and the candidates who put their name on the ballot and everybody who's running on this election day. They will be here well into the night after we are all gone, so before the pledge, let's give them a round of applause real quick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This morning, somebody asked me if I missed the hustle of Election Day, and I said, well, if I wasn't spending the first half of the day in budget meetings, I would have said no, but having spent the first half of the day in budget meeting, I think I'd rather be running an election than trying to balance a budget. We're going to start by building our consent agenda, and then after that, we've got two work session items. So on the agenda, items one through 10, I'm going to hold item number three.
I have, I have no others.
That was the same as mine.
All right. 11 through 20.
Just wanted to point out on 11 that that is a decrease. We can't say that loud enough when it's one point.
A decrease of $1.5 million?
Right, Richard.
Well done.
Usually change orders go the opposite way, so let's just make sure that we're very clear that that's a decrease.
On number 12, we're missing an "I" in Timpson.
I was going to point that out, but yes.
I was going to hold item number 17. We have the infamous Rob Moore here, so we thought we'd hold that for you.
I have no others.
Okay, 21 through 30.
Do we need to talk through number 25, adjustments to precincts? Or is that pretty self-explanatory?
No, I think we, well, we need to say whether we approve or deny. I would recommend approve. I'm okay with approve on consent.
I'm good there, too, unless there's.
I'm good with that.
No others. Okay, 31 through, I think.
Yeah, I've gone through all those.
36, 31 through 36, any others?
None for me.
None for me.
And then we need number 40. Ralph, do we need Ralph left? There we are.
Nope.
Nope. Okay, and Paul, you just need 40? Okay, so we can strike 37, 38, and 39, and approve 40 as stated. Halene, you want to go through that?
Okay, we have a hold on number three. Number 12 is missing an "I" in Timpson. Hold on 17. Approve on 25. Strike 37, 38, 39, and approve 40.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. We will jump into our work session. For the first work session, I'm going to turn the time to Commissioner Gordon. I just like saying Commissioner Gordon.
I know you do. We have, every year, apparently, since it's my first year, you know, I get to say that, but have, do a golf tournament. It's a fundraiser for our friends through Wasatch Mental Health, but really the Giant Steps Autistic School. And we had a great, great turnout this last July. There were many, many hands that, that made this successful, many, many generous businesses and individuals from around the county. And we filled up, filled up the, the tournament and had a lot of people that day chasing little golf balls all around Thanksgiving Point. No one was injured, and that's always, that's always important to point out. But, but really a great, great turnout and a, and a record number. So once all of the cards fell and all of the invoices were paid and everything, that's why this took place in July. And we wanted to present that check to our friends from Wasatch Mental Health and Giant Steps Autistic School. And so we have 30, the final number was $33,055. I think there might be some cents on here, but we left them out. We'll, we'll make sure that you're made whole on that. So we wanted to just get a picture of us with, with, with you and if we could. Right here?
I think it's the best shot of the picture.
This routing account number is not accurate.
See it.
We'll make sure you get the real one.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Hi. Well, my name is Michael King, and I am the program manager for Giant Steps. And there's a lot of hands that go into making Giant Steps a wonderful program for the little kids that need it. And we really are grateful for the ongoing support we've had for so many years from the Utah County Commission. So thank you all, Commissioner Gordon, Commissioner Powers Gardner, and Commissioner Sakovic. It really does mean a lot to us, and every cent goes to help in the children have good treatment experiences and grow and learn. And every day, parents are telling me how grateful they are for the program and for the support that we get from the community. And this is one of the big ones that we, that we get every year, and we're so grateful for it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our pleasure, thank you. All right.
Thank you so much. I just want to add to that and, and really appreciate, as I think this partnership exemplifies just the support we have as an agency, not just with this particular program, but from the commission and that intersect with many of the departments from the county. So my deepest thanks to all of you and everybody who came out and supported us. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Next, our next work session agenda item is updates from the Point development.
Members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity to be here and share a little update on what we're doing at the Point. I'm Alan Matheson. I'm the Executive Director of the Point of the Mountain State Land Authority, which is the entity created by the state to oversee the redevelopment of the 600 acres formerly occupied by the Draper State Prison. And we've hit a number of key milestones this month and thought this would be a great time to give you another little update on where we are and answer any questions. So we kind of know that this is an opportunity that's rare, and I didn't fully appreciate that until we started hearing from people all around the country. Just last week, there was a conference of developers, planners in California that had a session on this. There was a national publication last week that talked about the Point as a rare example. And this morning, we were having our board meeting, and Governor Cox came, and he said, this isn't a generational opportunity. This is really a once-in-a-state-history opportunity. To have 600 acres, blank canvas, served by existing infrastructure between two of the fastest-growing metropolitan regions in the country, two great labor sheds, close to universities, beautiful setting, it's just a rare thing. We feel very heavily the responsibility to do this right. The effort is led by a board of 12. The positions are determined by the legislature, appointed by the governor and legislative leadership. These are all people who are longtime Utahns, all raising our families here and care very much about the future of the state. This is a project that's being built by Utahns for Utahns with input from, you know, over 16,000 Utahns to date. We think it's important that this be really publicly driven. The work that we're doing is driven by six guiding principles, and I won't go through those in great detail, but the first one's important. This is really about promoting the public interest. This is a spot that all residents of the state own, and we feel that all need to get a return, a return financially, a return in terms of quality of life. So really trying to build a, a project that will set the bar high and that will provide benefits to people in the state for the long term. I'm going to just highlight that third one, regionally, and that's one of the reasons we're here. This is a statewide project. If we think about it only as a 600-acre project, or look just within the boundaries, we're going to make mistakes, we're going to miss opportunities. So we've thought of this as a catalyst for the broader region, and we want it to be of benefit far beyond the, the boundaries of this site. So one of the, the key milestones is that we've pretty much finished demolition. If you've driven by the site lately, you'll see that guard towers and the buildings are down, and all that's left is a little crushing of the concrete. So over 70% of the materials on the site have been recycled. We've got a mound of crushed concrete that's going to be used for road base and some foundations, reduced almost 8,000 truck trips carrying heavy loads off the site, impacting roads, air quality, et cetera. So we've tried to set a standard early on of doing this in a thoughtful way, saving money and saving resources.
I think you had every material handler and excavator in the state there at one point. I would drive by, it was like a sea.
It was busy, wasn't it?
It was.
There's, it was one company, Grant Mackey, but I think they probably reached out and got help from a lot of different groups.
I'd imagine.
Yeah. It made my, my four-year-old grandson really excited to go and count excavators every time he went by. Well, this, the planning has now been wrapped up for Phase One, the concept plan or the master plan for the site. That's another big milestone. And as we head into this, I wanted to maybe give you a little bit of background on what Phase One is going to look like and what you can expect over the next few months and years. So we have a framework plan for the entire site, but within the middle of that is Phase One. Now, that's kind of unusual to start in the middle of a project, but we've made a commitment to the people of the state to deliver something special. And we're also working to attract the kinds of companies that have not looked at Utah before. And it's not enough just to go to them and say, someday we'll have this area. We feel that we need to create the place that they're looking for, and we've been listening to, to some of their input. This is a little bit of a, a plan for Phase One. There are some areas in there that I'll point out. It's 100 acres. That green space from left to right there is the River Deranged Trail that connect the Jordan River Parkway to regional trails east of I-15 and be a key connection point in the most extensive network of regional trails west of the Mississippi. There's a Central Park area, a promenade with world-class shopping, a mix of uses, a lot of open space. There's even a chapel there. If you've looked at demolition, the last thing standing is the old prison chapel. There was a lot of interest in keeping something historical, and we thought that was really symbolic of what's happening here. We heard from many of the inmates that talked about how this chapel changed their lives. It's a place of redemption and hope in an otherwise pretty dreary place. This was a, a building that was constructed by the inmates, paid for by community groups, church groups, and others, dedicated by Hugh B. Brown, the first presidency of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Catholic bishop ministers in the area. And we thought it symbolized this transition from a place of constraint and limits and discouragement to a place of openness, of transparency, of growth, of hope. And so we think that's an important piece. The other thing I'll mention is that these, this has been built primarily, the vast majority of it, by private money that's coming in. And our private sector developers are going to be building it out and raising the money to make it happen. So this is a little rendering of Phase One. You can see that's kind of going left to right is actually north to south. Porter Rockwell Boulevard that will connect Bangator Highway to 146 South. This shows the different types of uses, 2 million square feet of office, 3 million square feet of residential, significant retail hospitality, entertainment, and more, a lot of open space. That's one thing we heard from the people. They really wanted a place where they could gather and be outdoors. There will be a range of housing here. We're operating under a statute that directs us to accomplish a number of things, including having housing that reflects the workforce. And so we're trying to very much do that. We've got a commitment from our developers to include affordable housing at the site and make, again, that connection to those who are going to be working there so they can live there and provide convenience. Transportation, I think, is on everybody's mind. We're concerned about congestion and, and what that will do. We've implemented a number of strategies where we've looked at the best practices from around the world, and it includes everything from more road connections to transit. The frontrunner station will be there. High-quality transit will go through the site and down here into Utah County, connecting the counties a little bit better. There will be internal circulators and micro-mobility options. All of that reduces traffic generation by 30%, which is world-class, as good as it's been done anywhere in the world. We talk about this as Utah's innovation community, and that really is the focus. A place where we can generate ideas, nurture those ideas, commercialize them, to provide new businesses, new economic opportunities, and importantly, to solve problems. So you'll see a real focus on life sciences, on high tech, on energy and things that are important here. In fact, probably the first building that will be constructed is what we're referring to now as the Convergence Hall, which will be a place where Utah's institutions of higher learning can come together, professors, students. There'll be some housing for post-grads, some of the top around the world that will be able to come and work with not just the universities, but the private sector and address, again, some of the challenges that we have. So now I'm just going to show you some pretty pictures of what we expect so you can get a sense for what's coming. This is part of that promenade, the, the main street. It'll have vehicles, but could be closed off for farmers' markets and other things. This is kind of the food hall concept. See that building in the, in the back that's kind of lit up? That's depicting the Convergence Hall. It'll look different from that. We don't have the architect yet, but right by that Convergence Hall, right by the promenade, will be this place with interesting restaurants. The developers are incentivized to bring in restaurants and retail and businesses we haven't seen before. This is part of that River Deranged Trail that will serve a number of purposes. One, stormwater management, two, recreation, but also active transportation. So someone could jump on the Jordan River Parkway, ride their bike, get to this site. He could lunchtime, jump on a mountain bike, ride across I-15, do some trails in Corner Canyon, and be back for the afternoon. This is that little park by the chapel that's being preserved. Central Park will have year-round programming, a place for people to gather, to be with friends and family, and we think that that's really important. And then maybe the last thing that I'll mention is the Development Agreement. This is the agreement with our private sector development partners to actually implement the vision. This has been months in the making. Very experienced attorneys from around the country have been involved and said it's the most complex they've ever worked on. This morning in our board meeting, our board approved the agreement. It'll be signed in a ceremony on Monday, and that signals the beginning of implementation. So we're excited. Last week, the legislature appropriated the initial loan for putting in the infrastructure for Phase One. That'll be paid back with revenues from the project. And so the last thing I'll say is timeline. You'll see infrastructure starting next spring as the weather clears up. First building's going vertical in 2025 and probably the first occupancy in 2027. But this is, I started by saying we take this seriously. This is a heavy responsibility. We know we represent people that we care about and generations we don't know yet, but we're going to give it our best and do something that all of us can be proud of. So thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming to present to us, even though it doesn't fall within our county. We have a similar opportunity where we are developing the Old Geneva Steel Site right in the middle of the fastest-growing county and the fastest-growing state in the country. Once again, this is more than once in a generation or a lifetime. It's an opportunity that most places don't ever get, right?
So true.
And I think the two sites, we're growing at such a fast rate that they're not in competition, right? They, they both serve a purpose. This is, this will be an innovation hub. That one's got a healthcare right next to a university hub, and I think the two will work hand in hand to reshape the metropolitan area. I'm very excited about both.
That's very much our vision, Commissioner. We think so, too. We're growing. We need it. This is a state that can set an example for others, and we need to be taking advantage of these opportunities and making sure that they're complementary.
Yeah, there's definitely room for both, and, and I'm glad they're working together hand in hand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our agenda items. The first item we have is a resolution declaring Saturday Small Business Saturday. I've got a resolution here that I'll read. It says, whereas the government of Utah County celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community. Whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 33 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62.7% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.4% of employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent on a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas 72 cents of consumers, 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday in 2022 made them want to shop and dine at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas Utah County supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed that Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the County Commission of Utah County do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and to shop small throughout the year. I, I try to shop at local businesses as much as possible. I have several friends that own restaurants and shops right here in Utah County. Those shops, like you said, support their family. That money stays local, and it is the engine that drives us. I think the state of Utah actually has a little bit higher statistics than the rest of the nation as far as the number of businesses that are small businesses and the number of people employed at small businesses. As someone who's owned several local small businesses yourself, Commissioner Gordon, I know you understand the importance of these businesses to, to support families and pay mortgages and feed kids and, and keep us all going. So with that, I would accept a motion, but before, if either of you want to say something.
I think all of us are familiar with many, many small business owners, and they are the backbone, literally, the economy of this country. And it's remarkable to see how well they do, and there are many that don't make it, of course, but the, the, those that do are literally the engine of this nation. So for that, yes, this is very well timed. Thanks.
Yeah, majority of my working career has been on Main Street and rubbing shoulders with other Main Street business owners. It really exemplifies, I think, the importance of shopping local and keeping those tax dollars in, in our communities. So, yeah, very good. I'll make a motion to approve item three.
And I can second that motion.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes 3-0. Thank you. Item number 17, approve and authorize the signature on the Second Amendment to the agreement between Utah County and Central Utah Water Conservancy District.
Commissioners, what a privilege it is to be here today. I'm Rob Moore. I'm the General Counsel for Central Utah Water Conservancy District. We are here today in relation to an important regional project. It's a groundwater recharge site. This commission approved that, essentially approved an ARPA grant for this project. that, essentially approved an ARPA grant for this project back in September 14, 2022. As part of that, and that was in the amount of $10 million. As part of that approval, you approved item number one. There was a concern that that project may not get done in time, and because of that, there was an item number one that was approved in December of 2022. And what was happening is the district was in the process of negotiating with some owners of the Highland Gravel Pit, which is the mouth of American Fort Canyon. It's approximately 114 acres. And they had been negotiating with those folks for quite some time. So when I started with the district, that's one of the priorities I took and was able to get that negotiated, that agreement that has been finalized. We have an agreement. We're doing our due diligence as currently right now. Part of that, item number one that was approved by the commission, had a December 1 closing, December 1, 2023, closing date. So if the ARPA grant, if we had not closed on that Highland Gravel Pit by December 1, 2023, then we were supposed to move to our second site. So I'm here before you today on Amendment Number Two, asking for an additional 30-day extension to December 31, 2023, to close on that gravel pit, the Highland Gravel Pit site. We are, as mentioned, in the due diligence period, we're anticipating closing on December 8 of this year. So we just need a little more time, not a lot of time, just a little more time to close this. The final cost to acquire that property was 19.5 million. This benefits, again, regional northern Utah County cities as we look at a groundwater recharge site for this property. We're excited to be able to do this. There was appraisals between 15 million and 33 million. There were six different appraisals done on that property, and we were able to resolve it at 19.5. So we feel comfortable with that. And so I'm here today just to ask for a 30-day extension on that approval.
Can you get it done?
That's what I'm doing. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
You said December 8 is your estimated close date?
Yes. I just talked to the title company yesterday, and that was the day we're targeting.
Okay.
So if we can have to December 31, 2023, I don't want to be that close to Christmas, so I'm trying to get it done much quicker than that. So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with the 30-day extension. I know that we have some other water projects that had ARPA funds that are, because of increases in cost, they're looking for an additional $20 million. So if people aren't getting their projects done, we are looking at clawing back money so that we can redirect it, because those funds will lose significant federal grants if we don't get them funding. So I would prefer to see this done in 30 days.
It will be done. Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Motion to approve, item 17.
And I will second that motion.
All right. It's been moving second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, that passes 3-0.
Thank you for sharing your time.
See you again.
Y'all look good.
Thanks.
Come back and visit again.
Yeah.
Is that it? I think that might be it.
Public comment before.
Yep, we'll do public comment. Yeah, come up to the podium, and you'll get, we use three minutes typically for public comment. And just so you know, with public comment, we typically don't, it's not a back-and-forth conversation. We accept three minutes of comment.
Yeah. Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for letting me come. So I'm a resident of Alpine City, representing many residents concerned with the Lambert Park conservation easement.
Sorry, tell us your name.
Oh, Amanda Collins.
Amanda, thank you.
Do I need to say address or anything?
Oh, that's great.
Okay. So I also will email you. I've got two links of petitions that I've created to express concerns with this easement. So there's a lot of Alpine residents that also express these concerns. Alpine City Council has already passed a conservation easement and is asking Utah County to be the grantee of the easement. Lambert Park has been owned by the city for 67 years. It has been improved and well-maintained by the city. Alpine City over the decades has turned what was once a privately-owned turkey farm to a nature park frequently used by hikers, bikers, horseback riders alike. Alpine residents love Lambert Park and continue to support the city's investments to maintain and improve the park. Lambert Park, under the management of the city, is thriving. If the park has been so well-managed and protected for over six decades, why is there a need for already-city-owned land to be put into a conservation easement? Many citizens express concerns that the conservation easement's true purpose is to prevent a road, a planned road, from being completed through Lambert Park, one that would cross right in front of a councilman's home connecting onto a street, Moyle Drive. These concerns stem from the fact that the proposed easement originated from the residents that live on Moyle Drive. A current city council member currently lives on Moyle Drive and was the one who originally proposed the easement to the city council. There is currently development happening in a neighborhood that is completely landlocked by Lambert Park, and there will be more developments immediately surrounding the park. Implementing conservation easement that restricts your options to deal with this increased development around the park is negligent planning on the part of the city. If the county becomes the grantee of the easement, the county will be taking on the liability of safety issues faced by the residents surrounding Lambert Park and users of the park, since currently we will be funneling all current and future development around the park down one single access road that cuts right across a few of the trails. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. My name's Steve Benning. I live in Grove Drive in Alpine, and it's the same subject, the conservation easement, that our city's proposing. A little bit about my background. I have my bachelor's degree is in Natural Resources Management/Forestry from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. And I was also on a wildfire crew for that summer through the school and working for the U.S. Forest Service. So I've got a little background. I wouldn't call myself an expert, but I've got a background in this and other personal fires. So my main concern, we moved in five years ago, and I walked down, the morning after we walked, after we moved in, I walked down to my driveway, and I looked up and down Grove Drive, which is a little country road, basically. And I thought, "How are we going to ever get all these people out of here in a wildfire where we've got heavy winds?" I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about fires where there's no winds, but fires like they had in Lahaina where the wind is blowing strong and can move so fast. So what I wanted to, you know, that's my main concern, is fires and the safety of our community. And what I wanted to suggest was, if you are considering this conservation easement, I'd like to invite any of the commissioners or all the commissioners out to take a tour of our neighborhoods and see all the fuel we've got and see the roads that they think we can get out of, you know, in a, you know, in a critical situation, because I think, I think it could be a catastrophe. We, you know, it could be very well, we'd have, the roads would get blocked, we'd have bottlenecks in the road. So anyway, that's my concern. And like I said, I'd like to invite you to come out and see our concerns, because we only have the one road out and then a dirt road up above in the upper developments. And we've got new houses going in constantly. So anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And if you can come out and see us, that would be great.
Where's the clock? Is there a place I?
It's usually over there.
Okay, all right. My name is Bob Zirker. I'm a resident of Alpine, and it's the same subject, the Lambert Park. The park has quite a history. It has been used by the citizens, not that much, but in the past, they built a rodeo ground where many of our, it's the highlight of Alpine days, and it's been a very good thing for the city of Alpine. It brings us together. We also, through that park, got a pressurized irrigation system that runs right through the park. We have two large retention basins, and it provides all the citizens of Alpine irrigation water. Also, they've built many trails for bikers. And the people that use the park for that kind of thing usually is about 10 to 15%. So the park isn't getting a lot of use, but it is a very beautiful park and a nice place to go. But we think that the citizens of Alpine have provided things in the past that wouldn't meet the requirements for a conservation easement or what would have allowed. They wouldn't have allowed the rodeo ground for sure, and I'm not sure they would allow the pressurized irrigation. And so what we're asking is for the citizens of Alpine to remain in control of the park. We don't think they'll do a bad job. We think we'll do a great job. We have since 1958. And so this particular city council, which is four of them, not all five, have decided that they want to put this conservation easement and establish what they think is the future. And I don't know how they know what the future's going to bring, because there weren't mountain bikes when they started the park. They would have never had those paths, but it's been very effective. But, and there's other things. We have no foresight of what's going to happen. And so, please, don't take on this conservation easement. We think we can manage our park. We don't want any, we don't mind Utah County. We just don't want any third party involved in our city, because we think we can handle it the best. And that park isn't like, it's my timeout, by the way. I don't want to.
You've got one more minute.
Okay. It's not like Yellowstone. It's not this beautiful place that people would gather just to see it. No, it isn't that. We only have the poppies, and that's just for a short period of time where people come out of the way to see them. But what was I going to say? I think I could probably close right now. I think you guys understand what I'm saying. We want to maintain our own park. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. Any other public comment? Is there any online, Helene?
No.
Okay. Seeing that, we'll go into our closed session. Thank you.